The LTV sun check, the LTV sun check.
The LTV sun check, the LTV sun check.
Okay. Welcome everyone to the nine AM meeting of the B O C C. We'll start with invitation by Mr. Travis.
This from King David. Blessed are they whose ways are blameless, who walk according to the law of the Lord. Blessed are they who keep his statutes and keep him with all their heart. They do nothing wrong. They walk in his ways. You have laid down precepts that are fully obeyed. Oh, that my ways were steadfast in obeying your decree. Then I would not be put to shame when I consider all your commands. I will praise you with an upright heart as I learn your righteous laws. I will obey your decrees. Do not utterly forsake me. Lord God of heaven, we thank you for this day, for this gathering, for this place, for these godly men who lead in this town. Keep us, Lord. Keep us in your way. Guide our steps, direct our thoughts, take command of the work of our hands and oversee the future for us as we work with you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge? A pledge, Legion?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I had a, I have to say I had a uh-oh moment this morning. I got, I'm, I got a jury notification a while back. So this, I think these next couple of weeks I'm on jury duty. And I, last night I forgot all about it. I was doing my taxes last night and I get frustrated because I have to pay taxes on my social security benefits. So I, I, I kind of get kind of testy. And Kelly this morning walks in at office and said, are you on jury duty this morning? And I went, uh-oh, forgot to check. So no blue suits at the door, please. So we'll head in minutes.
I move approval of the minutes.
Hey, I have a motion to approve the minutes from last week. Any discussion, comments on those?
No, I'm good.
See none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Rader is under the weather today, so he's out. I'll run through consent agenda. First one is call for bids. This is a call for bid for the Italian Creek Road culvert project. This is a culvert damaged in two thousand twenty-two. It's a repair replacement. It's, this one's funded through FEMA, the repair of it. We're estimating somewhere around seven hundred and forty thousand dollars to win that. The cost. Agreements, contracts, bid awards. We've been working our contract with the Maine Society of Southwest Washington since our contract expired at the end of December. We've been working under a temporary contract and sheriff has and attorneys have worked back and forth. Tried, tried to incorporate some things that we had requests from the B O C C. I think this is, this is accumulates in the best we, we have right at this, this point in time. It's a one-year contract. The dollar amount fits into what we already had budgeted, so there's no issues there. You could see, there could be a little extra for, what's not in here is some after-hours veterinary services. Or if every once in a while we get some large animal issues, if something like that popped up, it would not be part of this hundred and eleven. That would be extra. But other than that, I think it pretty well covers us for this year. We're still looking, working to see what it looks like in the future, but that's where we are with that. Final cost report for county forces construction, a paving at Camelot Lot. State law, it sounds like when we do a, a project, we have to report what our estimated cost is for doing it. And then we're completed what the actual cost was. And that's what we're doing here. We're reporting the actual cost of completing this project. And the actual cost was eighteen thousand three, right in that area. Contract completion letter to Apex Mechanical for the boiler replacement at Calhoun County Administration and Annex Buildings. Bid award to North Wars Linings and Geo Textile Projects. Products for the purchase of the, the covers we use, the geomembrane covers we used up at, we use at the landfill. Contract execution with Tappany for the two watershed treatment plant improvements project. They were the low bidder on that, if you remember. And that actually is an ARPA funds project. Board of Correspondents, a letter to dated three eighteen twenty-five to Kevin Bloom, reappointing him to the Building and Planning Advisory Council. A four-year term that runs through the end of July two thousand twenty-nine. A letter dated three eighteen twenty-five to Jeanette E. Chabelli, sorry if that's wrong, to reappointing her to the Building and Planning Advisory Council. Representing lower Columbia Contractors. This is a four-year term that runs through the end of July two thousand twenty-nine. A letter to Washington State Department of Ecology regarding Western Washington Phase Two Municipal Stormwater General Permit. And then executed contract, signed letter dated three ten twenty-five to the nine eight eight Call Center Application Review Committee. Regarding supporting Olympic Health and Recovery Services application for the nine eight eight Crisis Line Call Center. Did we explain that one last week? Do you remember?
I don't.
This was, right now, we have a hotline that's, that's a local line. And I think we, we talked about it, it gets like four thousand calls a month. Well, nationally they're going to a nine eight eight. And they set up these centers. I think there's, if I remember right, was there four Western centers? Four in the state?
Right.
And we would like this group that all, that handles our, the eight hundred number that's already there to be one of the centers. And so that, we agreed to send a letter of support to try and make sure that stayed here. So that people from Colorado or different parts weren't just answering those calls and trying to send them here. So that's what that's about. And then we had vouchers in an amount of four hundred and eighty-three thousand four eighty-six. And that's consent agenda. Questions, comments on consent? See none?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Last chance for comments. See none? We'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. One motion item, might be a quick day. Public works.
Good morning. Susan Eugenius County Engineer. What we brought before the commission today is the bid award for the steel structural plate arch for the Garlock Road Delameter Creek Fish Passage Project. Due to the timeline of the fish window work and the bidding of the actual construction work, we made the decision to go out to bid to buy the materials prior to the construction contract. We opened those last week on March tenth. We received two bids with the apparent, with the lowest responsive bidder being Contact Engineered Solutions for a total cost of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents, which includes Washington State sales tax. This will supply the arch plates that will be contractor who will win the construction contract will install. The contact will be required to provide the shop joints to make sure it meets our requirements, construct the materials, have them delivered to the site. Make sure that the contractor is installing it per their requirements and providing us load rating at the end of the project.
Okay. Any questions on that? Entertain a motion.
I move approval of the motion item number nine, the bid award to Contact Engineering Solutions.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item number nine, the bid award to Contact. Questions, comments from the others? See none? We'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. One motion item, might be a quick day. Public works.
Good morning. Susan Eugenius County Engineer. What we brought before the commission today is the bid award for the steel structural plate arch for the Garlock Road Delameter Creek Fish Passage Project. Due to the timeline of the fish window work and the bidding of the actual construction work, we made the decision to go out to bid to buy the materials prior to the construction contract. We opened those last week on March tenth. We received two bids with the apparent, with the lowest responsive bidder being Contact Engineered Solutions for a total cost of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents, which includes Washington State sales tax. This will supply the arch plates that will be contractor who will win the construction contract will install. The contact will be required to provide the shop joints to make sure it meets our requirements, construct the materials, have them delivered to the site. Make sure that the contractor is installing it per their requirements and providing us load rating at the end of the project.
Okay. Any questions on that? Entertain a motion.
I move approval of the motion item number nine, the bid award to Contact Engineering Solutions.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item number nine, the bid award to Contact. Questions, comments from the others? See none? We'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. One motion item, might be a quick day. Public works.
Good morning. Susan Eugenius County Engineer. What we brought before the commission today is the bid award for the steel structural plate arch for the Garlock Road Delameter Creek Fish Passage Project. Due to the timeline of the fish window work and the bidding of the actual construction work, we made the decision to go out to bid to buy the materials prior to the construction contract. We opened those last week on March tenth. We received two bids with the apparent, with the lowest responsive bidder being Contact Engineered Solutions for a total cost of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents, which includes Washington State sales tax. This will supply the arch plates that will be contractor who will win the construction contract will install. The contact will be required to provide the shop joints to make sure it meets our requirements, construct the materials, have them delivered to the site. Make sure that the contractor is installing it per their requirements and providing us load rating at the end of the project.
Okay. Any questions on that? Entertain a motion.
I move approval of the motion item number nine, the bid award to Contact Engineering Solutions.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item number nine, the bid award to Contact. Questions, comments from the others? See none? We'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. One motion item, might be a quick day. Public works.
Good morning. Susan Eugenius County Engineer. What we brought before the commission today is the bid award for the steel structural plate arch for the Garlock Road Delameter Creek Fish Passage Project. Due to the timeline of the fish window work and the bidding of the actual construction work, we made the decision to go out to bid to buy the materials prior to the construction contract. We opened those last week on March tenth. We received two bids with the apparent, with the lowest responsive bidder being Contact Engineered Solutions for a total cost of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents, which includes Washington State sales tax. This will supply the arch plates that will be contractor who will win the construction contract will install. The contact will be required to provide the shop joints to make sure it meets our requirements, construct the materials, have them delivered to the site. Make sure that the contractor is installing it per their requirements and providing us load rating at the end of the project.
Okay. Any questions on that? Entertain a motion.
I move approval of the motion item number nine, the bid award to Contact Engineering Solutions.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item number nine, the bid award to Contact. Questions, comments from the others? See none? We'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Upcoming tomorrow. At two thirty, we will, you're probably all getting tired of talking about this, but we will be looking at the Port of Woodland, the tax increment financing. We've asked, our, our finance person has given us some financial, past history financial information. We're just trying to, and we'll go over some of that tomorrow. We're trying to, the claims are always that it's going to bring in more and, and, and cover whatever we lose. And so me being an ex-banker tries to put that into numbers and see if that, that seems feasible. If it, I mean, if it, if it does, that's, that puts a different outlook on it. If it doesn't, then we have that discussion. But we're going to try and do a little bit of that tomorrow. So that's tomorrow at two thirty. We'll have that. We, we are hoping to have somebody from the firm that actually put that project together for them that has done a similar thing for the city of Natche. And I think down in Vancouver on, I can't guarantee that that will happen. But just trying to have that resource available to ask some questions. So that's tomorrow. Next week, we have Monday and Tuesday, but then my colleagues are, are, are gone Wednesday through the end of the week. So there'll be no Wednesday meetings next week. Don't think I missed anything. Anything, Steve, before we open this up? Nope, we're good. Okay. It's, if you have comments, you're, we, we got, I got Tim, I follow up. I got Tim settled the other day on where the, he was asking about police blotter type stuff. And that stuff is, it appears is gathered where the newspaper used to get it is at nine one one. And they have those instances. And then if your media outlet, it sounds like you can still access those. But that's, that's where that, so if anybody had the same curiosity, that's where that comes from. Okay. Quick meeting today. We appreciate you coming. We're always glad to see you. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you.